Okay. I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of August 21st, 2019. Hi, everybody. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Fair.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Maggie LeCarrath, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda and because we have a call and we've got to do a roll call on all of this.
Right. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yep.
Councilmember Mullen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Wagner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 14th, 2019 with the amended agenda posted on August 15th, 2019.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good afternoon. Mayor Wagner, Mayor Proton Fair, members of City Council. The item before you this afternoon is the temporary and permanent skate park options that the council asked staff to bring back after the July 8, 2019 regular meeting. So as we, as we move forward, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on the properties and the areas we're looking at. So you can see the, the quote we refer to as the Crumer Case property, which is a 1.7 floor acre parcel adjacent to Bluffs Park. And I know that there have been questions on the property and portions that we've leased out to the 600 spring developer. And so I just wanted to show that. You can see now the area in blue is roughly 55,000 square feet and that's what we have available right now as of today for development, whatever, you know, essentially we decide to put on there. The remaining yellow portion down there, which is 20,000 square feet, we would receive back in approximately 10 months. So it'd be July 2020 and we would have the full property for use. So as we go, I just want to keep that in mind on the portions that we're talking about for temporary parks and then as we move to the discussion on a permanent park, what we'll have. So one other item before we get into the full discussion on the different kinds of parks is the environmental impact report that was completed in 2013. Now, why this is important is that this environmental impact report studied the entire Crumer subdivision. So not only this parcel that was, that the city received as a part of that subdivision, but the entire property. So the fortunate part with that is that this typically is not done this way, but we're fortunate that a 12,500 square foot skate park was studied as a potential use for this property. In addition to that was a study of 85 to 90 parking spaces. And while that original project had talked about closing Winter Mesa Drive for, for part of that parking, we are confident that we would still be able to have more than enough parking for the proposed project, which is noted in gray on the map here, adjacent to the skate park. So the other important note with that EIR is that the reason you'll hear 12,500 square feet mentioned throughout this presentation is that that's what the, the environmental impact report reviewed. And so if we were to go over that limit for a permanent skate park, it could potentially trigger a full review of the CEQA process and a new EIR. So just want to make that clear upfront. I know we'll touch base on it again when we get to the, the permanent skate park discussion. So with the temporary park, we're going to, our two options today that we're proposing are what we're, option A, which is an X-Games style park and what council specifically directed us to look into at the meeting in July. And so if you're not familiar with that, it is a competition style park. It includes generally concrete, skate light material, which is a wood material that goes over concrete scaffolding to support that. So we will get through, we will get through those options as we move forward. But the second option, and one that we think is, is a viable option as well, is for us to pave a portion of the property with either concrete or asphalt and then install portable elements, similar to how Papa Jack's used to be, a little bit different, but in a similar style. So, so we'll start with option A, which is the X-Games style park. And you can see here that we have proposed a, if this option is selected, a 5,000 to 7,000 square foot park. Originally, the council had asked us to explore up to a 15,000 square foot option. And when we reached out to the various designers that do these types of parks, they were, they thought that 12 to 15,000 was a very large park for a temporary park such as this. So we reduced that size to 5 to 7,000 square feet. And one thing to note is that this is similar in cost on a per square foot basis as a permanent skate park would be. So with the 5,000 to 7,000 square foot size, we would anticipate a $450,000 to $590,000 cost for a skate park such as this. The good news with a temporary park of, of this nature is that we think that we could have it completed within six to nine months. And as I mentioned earlier, this would be, be designed out of some concrete to be poured there with skate light material, which is the wood type material that you see in the photo there laid over the concrete and then scaffolding to support some of the higher elements. One thing I will say is that the designers did not, were not able to come up with an option that was similar to this, that was used for, for public longer than a couple week period or something like that, like I said, similar to competition. So it's not something that they've seen in a design of this type for a use of two to three years in a municipal setting, but they did agree that it could be done. If you look at some of the examples here that would be included in, in this type of skate park, you can see the transition elements, which is on the, the left side of your screen, which is more curves, bowls, pools, things like that, curvilinear, curvilinear shapes that, that you might see with, with competitions, but then also a street style course, which is on the photo on the right, which is rails, step ups, ledges to grind on and things like that, that you would see in like a skate plaza or a city plaza, something like that. And then you can see a couple more of those elements here with stairs and ledges as well. So the second option for a temporary skate park that we think would be, be viable would be something similar to Papa Jack's where we would lay a temporary lot down of asphalt or concrete and then install portable elements on that. We have some options for portable elements that we'll show you here, but we do think that if we were to do this design, that a couple of things would benefit us. Number one, we could sell the equipment, the temporary equipment that we would have to buy for this, once we were completed with the, with the temporary part of the park. So that's a benefit. And then the cost of this park is significantly cheaper. It is roughly $230,000 to $270,000. And depending on the surface, if we were to choose, for instance, asphalt over concrete, we think we could get that cost down a little bit more. So some of the things that would, we could potentially put there, and these are all just representative of what could go there. It's not what we're saying is going there. Different things like ramps and some of these portable elements, you can get them made of wood, made of metal, some are both. One of the things to take into consideration or that we would take into consideration is that steel and, and metal products are a little bit more durable, but we also could have potential sound issues with that. And I know that's something that was noted at Papa Jack's that we'd heard that we had a lot of complaints about noise. So wood is the second option, which is generally a little bit better skate surface and would have less, less sound, but it's not generally as durable. That most likely wouldn't be a problem since this would be out there for a couple of years and then we would be getting rid of the equipment. So if you look at some of the elements and, and one of the things we definitely would, would recommend is the item on the left is what's called a mini ramp. And that is something that you can see or has various sizes and starting points from the ledge that you could drop into the mini ramp on. It's something that's very popular and we think would be a really good option for the space regardless of what other components we get. So if this option is selected, we would definitely recommend that. And then you can see some of the other things, the spine where you can come up the ramp and, and freeze at the top or either grind on the rail and come back down or go over the top. So the other options, as you can see here, are more ramps and then the rail, which I'd, I'd shown earlier in one of the photos that, that are very popular. So finally, the one thing I'll touch on with a temporary park is that they would require roughly the same permitting process. And what that would be is number one, a coastal development permit to actually put the items there and to build it. And then the parking would require a conditional use permit. So both of those are things that we would, we would get through this process, but we do not believe that an addendum to the EIR would be required because of, of staying within the potential site and then being temporary in nature. And then finally, for the temporary skate park, this is a proposed schedule. If, if a temporary skate park was approved tonight, we would release the RFP within 10 days for design and build services. And we want, we would want to do those together instead of separating them out like we would for a permanent skate park in order to facilitate it more quickly. And then we would have those RFPs back within a month and then back to council in October for a review of the agreement and approval for those services before taking it to the planning commission in January, before ultimately installing and opening the skate park in March and May of next year respectively. So that's the information we have on our options for a temporary skate park. And as we move forward into the permanent skate park, and I know that we'll, we'll have a time for questions and answers, but I can come back to any of these slides as we move forward. So a permanent skate park is a little bit more intensive than a temporary skate park would be. And you can see here, the size that we talk about is a 12,500 square foot skate park, which was studied within the EIR. We can't speak to why that size was considered, but one thing we can say is that that is what would generally be considered a relatively appropriate size for a community, a size of skate park for a community the size of Malibu. And generally, all kinds of things are taken into account, such as the size of the community, traffic impacts, the, the type of property it's going on. So it would make sense at least why they studied that size, though we can't speak specifically on why that one was studied. And then another thing to note, as I mentioned earlier, is that if we do go above that 12,500 square foot mark, you could potentially trigger a full review of the CEQA process and potentially a new EIR, which would add to our timeframe that's here. Our current timeframe for a permanent skate park, if we were to get moving concurrently with a temporary park, regardless of a temporary parks there, we would get moving on this if approved, is that it would take two to three years. And so if the full CEQA process was triggered, it could potentially add a year to that. And just want to be clear and upfront about that. The proposed park would be made of reinforced concrete that's similar to, to most permanent skate parks. They're in ground, generally below the grade there and, and made of that material. So at the $60 to $70 per square foot projection, we would expect a permanent skate park of this size to cost 1 million to 1.125 million dollars. That includes a couple of things. Inflation, which we, we think by the time this gets built in, which is within a year or two.
Jefferson, did we lose you? Jefferson?
Yes, I'm here.
So the, the expected cost of that, like I said, would be 1 million to 1.125 million dollars. And, and we did take into account inflation for the project starting most likely within a year from now, as well as accessory items such as walkways, fencing, benches, things like that that come with a skate park such as this. So the permitting process for a permanent park is a touch more in depth, as I mentioned. We would go back and do an addendum to the 2013 EIR. The reason for that is we're not going to close Winter Mesa in this proposed project. And we would most likely move the skate park a little bit on, or onto the actual property itself. So we would want to do an addendum to the skate park and then things that were studied before, such as traffic pattern and parking regulations are updated from time to time. So we'd want to make sure that those are updated. Finally, the same process, a CDP, a CUP, and then a community, a robust community outreach process would also be included. So with those.
Jesse, could you just hold on one second? Jefferson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you mind muting your phone?
I'm sorry, say that again. I can't hear you too well.
We can hear you. Do you mind muting your phone until you speak?
Yeah, I'm going to go get the hard line at, at the lobby. Can I step out for a few minutes and then get back on the hard line?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jesse. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, one of the questions that we want to touch on is there's, there's been discussion on whether we would do a supervised or an unsupervised skate park. And that's something that comes up anytime a skate park is built. We spoke with JPIA, who is the city's insurance provider. And one of the things they noted is that almost all of the cities that have skate parks under their umbrella go with an unsupervised skate park route. And that is something that would apply to a temporary or a permanent skate park. It's essentially a skate at your own risk type thing that, that puts the city at a little bit less liability than having a supervised skate park would. But with that being said, we, we do have staff at Bluffs Park anytime the skate park would be open. So that's, that, those staff would be around to, to monitor the area and review that. So Bonnie is here as well for all questions related to CEQA and EIRs that I might not be able to answer in permitting and then happy to answer any questions from there. So that concludes our report.
Thank you, Jesse.
Could you talk about the community outreach part of the permanent park?
Sure. So the community, the community outreach part would be used primarily for us to help design the skate park, the permanent skate park and get the elements in there that, that local skaters want. So we would really, we would hold in-depth meetings with people and, and I, I don't want to put a number on it because it really depends on how quickly we want the project to move. We could probably hold six months of meetings with the public to try and determine the best. But we would try and do that as quickly as possible, but also to make sure that we get the appropriate elements for the skate park that, that the people want because it's, it's for them.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to public comments. I'll read three names at a time. If you don't mind kind of getting ready to speak, we can go through these quicker. Our first speaker is John Maza, followed by Alex Polito, followed by Lauren Polito.
Good evening. You have six parks to study with public outreach and nothing's been done since you purchased them. So one thing I'm going to ask is you do not put a permanent skate park option on this since the public deserves the right to look at all the different options. There are other options that could allow a much better skate park. And I think Malibu deserves a world-class skate park that's regional instead of just deciding a little one for Malibu. And you go to Mission VAO and places like that where they have stadiums and they have events and it makes a huge difference. And so there's also the convenience of some of the other places. For example, the corner of the, the old Chili Cook Off site, you can't put a ball field on that corner. You'll break a lot of car windows. And so you can put a, an MTA parking lot and a skate park behind that as a buffer and have plenty of land to do a 20,000 or 30,000 square foot area for skate events and parks. As some of you know, I've been working with the Surfing Heritage Foundation, whose board members are on the skateboard industry council and to try to come up with a world-class skate park. Part of that involves raising money, but that's not complete yet. But that's what the input of the public has on all these different parks. And so if you could do a very, very quick temporary park and resist the temptation to make it the A option that's expensive and in the ground and cement, because there's a tendency of this, of councils, and you won't be here when this happens, some of you, to say, oh gee, we got one of those. Let's go off and do the, the soccer fields or something. And then it becomes temporary permanent. So that's why I hope you go with the park that has the wood so it can rot and they can get a real park at some point. Otherwise, we'll have a temporary one for 10 years. Now, it is important to get the public in this process of getting parks. It's been almost a year since we got this land. There have been no outreach meetings. They were promised those. We have plenty of land to put plenty of place things. If, for example, you wanted to put a swimming pool on that particular area, you're not going to have enough parking, et cetera. So please make it temporary. Please make it really temporary so to force you to make action two years from now when you really have to make the decision. And remember, you have to do an EIR on all of these parks at once. Why do it twice? You're going to, you should decide where to put them and then order the EIR and get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. It's Axel Polito, followed by Lauren Polito.
Hi, my name is Axel. A lot of kids have been skating for a long time and can drop into a bowl at eight feet, but I am a beginner with a bunch of other kids. A 12, a 12,500 feet skate park wouldn't be big enough to support really good skaters and beginners like me. We need to give the beginners kids like me and little kids like glider place to learn as, a place to learn as well as the super good skaters.
Thank you. Lauren Polito, followed by John Polito, followed by Jody Gerson, followed by Finn Murphy.
John actually gave his minute to me, so he's not speaking. Thank you, Jesse, and everyone else who put all the work into finding all that information. It's great. I'm happy to see some progress being made. I just wanted to talk about the size a little bit of the park. When I pick up my daughter and her friends, it's not just six kids that pile into the car, but it's six skateboards too. They take them with them everywhere and it's every day. My daughter is in middle school and she follows hundreds of middle schoolers on Instagram and I would say that probably 90% or more of them are skaters. It is ingrained in the Malibu culture here. We have produced an Olympic skateboarder, you know? So the argument can be made that, you know, Jesse brought up, that maybe for another town, 12,500 square feet would be perfectly adequate for a town that has a population of 13,000 people, but that argument doesn't really hold water in Malibu. We are saturated with skaters here. So it is, it's not apples to apples. My fear is that if we go with the 12,500 square foot skate park, it's going to be too small. It's going to be overcrowded. We're going to have, you know, really experienced skaters going, you know, where the younger skaters are and, you know, it's, we're going to wind up with a situation where the kids are like, it's too crowded there. I don't want to go there. They're going to be going back to Tranqus, skating in the parking lot and getting in trouble and we're kind of be, be almost where we are now. So what I'm urging you guys to consider is an idea that someone else had brought up where there's kind of two phases. One is this 12,500 square feet because you currently have the EIR for that. And then simultaneously start a new EIR perhaps for another 8,000 or more square feet so that we can get moving on that as well. And obviously, we'd want them both to start now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next up is Jody, followed by Finn Murphy, followed by Scott Gillen.
Hello. First, I, I have a note that I want to make that whoever wrote the agenda, thank you. There was a lot of research that went into that with the timeline and, and all that. So for a temp park, a few things to consider. Option B is a great option. It would provide for a bigger skate park as well as I like the option for the site improvements. If we need parking, if you have to, you know, work on the rest of the park, you can do both of them together. And the bigger park is probably a better option and it's less expensive. For a permanent park at 12,500, I don't know if you guys think that's big enough. It's a great option for our population of 13,000, but we do get upwards of 13 million visitors that come through Malibu every year. So it might be a nice place to start and then we can see how it goes. And then if we can get the EIR in for an additional 8,000, maybe making 20,000 square foot park. I know that we have 1.7 acres up at Crumer. 12,500 would be less than a quarter of that acreage. And I don't know what's happening with the rest of it afterwards, but however the, however it goes, if we can at least not develop on the land and then see how the 12,5 get started, give the kids a chance, you know, our 2,500,000 kids, whatever, to explore it and then open it up to, you know, our 13 million visitors that come through probably in the summer. I just don't think it will be big enough. But also looking at other properties too. For a reference that I wrote on here is that Mammoth has 8,100 residents and they get 2.8 million people that go through Mammoth every year. Their skate park is 40,000 square foot and they're adding on more. I don't know if that holds any relevance to us here in Malibu, but it is pretty similar as far as. I got 30 seconds. Do you guys want a kickflip demo? You do? Kickflippers. Finn?
I'm kidding. I do, I just don't know if it's appropriate, that's.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jody. Okay, next up, Finn Murphy, Scott Gillen, and Robert Gold.
Hi, my name is Finn Murphy. I spoke at the last meeting and I just want to thank you all for letting me speak here tonight and for your time. I read through the proposal and I'm a little worried about the option A being like what we go with. 5,000 to 7,000 square foot option would not be good because the Cove Skate Park is 21,000 square feet. Venice, 16,000 more park, another 16,000. If you want to go all the way to, down to Orange County, there's Etnies, which is 62,000 square feet. And Van's Outdoor, which is 42,000 square feet. And you guys can research how many more huge ones there are down there. And I genuinely think 6,000 feet is too small and we would just get bored and go to those other parks, which will probably be used in a future meeting when we're trying to get a skate, a permanent skate park that, oh, they got bored and they weren't interested in it or anything. Like you said last meeting, that this will be kind of like a test park. With that, I think the 12,500 could be a much better option if you did it right. With that, I think the 12,500 could be a much better option, if you did it right. What we want would be like a flowy park to kind of match the surf influence of Malibu. We would want a flow bowl, deep enough to do airs, at least like eight feet, some street, like stair sets, rails, ledges of all different sizes, maybe like a small quarter pipe or mini ramp around two and a half to three feet, to learn new tricks and progress, and also for the more beginner skaters. Maybe a little like hangout area for all the skate moms and dads, too. So if you're wondering what the kids wanted, there you have it. And I was also wondering if you guys had any questions about what features that would suit our style of skating and skill level? I would want to answer any of those, if you have any.
Thank you, Finn.
Finn, I think we'll call you back up if we have some of those questions.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And we will have community input meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Scott Gillen, then Robert Gold, then Chris Murphy.
Good afternoon. I'm for the skate park. I don't, I didn't look at your report, I didn't look at the size, I don't skate. What I do do is build, and when I bought the Crumer site and changed it to the Case, the entrance was important to me. Everybody that goes to the park goes to the south and to the west. If you put the temporary park on the property that I donated to the city, they then have to cross the street. The potential for accidents is huge with the amount of vehicles that I have traveling, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt. That's my biggest concern. With that, you have a fund of 22,000 in the, besides the million, is that correct? So I'll give another 100,000, once the construction is done, wherever you put it, doesn't matter. Decide I gave you, or any additional pieces of dirt, but I don't want to see a child get hurt. I don't think anybody does. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next up, Robert Gold, then Chris Murphy, then Jaden Mitchell, who has four minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Robert Gold. As you know, I was one of the owners of the Crumer site, now the Case, and I spent 11 years of my life getting the property entitled. During the negotiations of the sale of the property to Scott Gillen, he asked me if I wanted to work with him to see the project to completion, so I'm still here with you. For the record, I am speaking on behalf of myself, not Scott, although I'm sure Scott will agree with a lot of what I have to say. With respect to the temporary skate park, I agree with Scott that adding another active use, especially on the other side of the street in this very busy park, is ill-advised. In addition to the recreational uses, the park now has to accommodate the active construction site with over 100 workers a day and dozens of trucks coming and going. This is tempting fate, that there's going to be an accident that could be avoided, and I hope the city can find an alternative for the temporary location. With respect to the permanent skate park, I remember meeting then-city manager Jim Forsen at his office, and Jim telling me that since Papa Jack's had closed, the city wanted the Crumer EIR to include a skate park as a project alternative. I was concerned about noise and the reputation, accurate or not, about what other activities take place in skate parks. I did some research, and I met Zach Wormhold. Zach told me that there were two essential elements for a successful skate park. First, it had to be in a highly visible place with clear lines of sight for parents and other responsible people monitoring the skate park. Second, the skate park needs to be located and designed so that it is compatible with the surrounding uses to avoid endless complaints from the neighbors. We engaged Zach to prepare a preliminary skate park design to be included in the Project CIR. This design is in your staff report. This was a very preliminary design solely for the purpose of determining under CEQA whether or not the Crummer property could accommodate a skate park. The site plan was not intended to be the final design and should not be, because it fails to meet Zach's two design criterias. It is tucked behind the back of the park and close to homes, creating potential conflicts which any homer would be concerned about if any type of park was being built next to their home. With this background, if the council decides to proceed with locating the permanent park on the Crummer site and not on one of the other properties recently acquired by the city, I respectfully request that alternative designs be considered using Zach's two criteria. To be clear, I do not object to a skate park, but just as I did during the approval process of Crummer, I am simply asking that due consideration be given to the neighbors so that Malibu can build an awesome skate park.
Thank you, Robert. Next, Chris Murphy, then Jaden Mitchell for four minutes, then Andy Lyon for six minutes.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank the city council members for supporting the children and families of Malibu by starting the steps necessary to bring skateboarding back to Malibu. The community appreciates your efforts greatly. Thank you very much. Finn's already gone over the size of the neighboring skate parks, and so I think we can all agree that 5,000 for a temporary site is rather small, and 12,500 for a permanent site is just, it's, we shouldn't be considering something that small at all. If we were going to be building new temporary baseball fields for the Little League teams, we would make, we would not make the fields a quarter the size of a normal field, because that would be absurd. And if we were to put in tennis courts, we would not make them the third of the side of a regulation court, because nobody would use them. And how about a 25-yard-long football field instead of 100, or a teeny-tiny soccer field? Skateboarding needs to be respected as a real sport. I know this to be true, because I follow my son and many of his Malibu friends to competitions all over Southern California and watch them compete. A 5,000-foot skateboard park does not honor their commitment to their sport. I feel as though the city of Malibu is really looking to support its citizens right now, and you in particular have showed a lot of positive attitude towards this project, and so we want to, we want to help you as much as we can. The other concern with building such a small temporary park is nobody's going to use it. They're going to all want to go back down to the Cove, or to Venice, or over to Westlake. And what happens then in a few years, when we revisit this, is that we get a report from the city saying that nobody's using the skate park. That concerns me. Covering the cost of the temporary park and a permanent park will not be an issue at all. As John Mazza alluded to, there's, there's plenty of connections within the city to the skate park industry. I don't think getting any kinds of corporate sponsors or individual donors, such as the very kind offer that was just made, will be a problem. And I think that Malibu deserves a middle, or a world-class skate park. The past 12 months have been some really challenging and dark times for the community. Every one of us here today was affected by what's gone on with the fires. We have mourned together, and now it is time to celebrate our city once again, and we look to you, the leaders of this community, to support the children, teens, and families of Malibu, and take a step in this positive direction. Please support building this, a properly-sized temporary skate park, and more importantly, a properly-sized permanent park. This is going to create real happiness within the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Jaden Mitchell, and is your person to give you a minute here? Yes, okay, thank you. Followed by Andy Lyon, followed by David Charvey, followed by Heather Gardner.
Hello, everyone. I would like to start off by saying I've seen so many people here support and support us and the skate park, and I think that we're very grateful for your support, and we appreciate it a lot, everyone here, all these kids, so thank you for that. I do have a couple things I would like to talk about in today's meeting. The 5,000-square-foot park is just not enough for all these kids here, and the 12,500-foot permanent park would also not be enough. It might be a quicker solution, but think of us. Malibu, let alone, has 13,000? Yeah, around there. But that may be enough to fit us, but not, not the other kids, or grownups even, coming from around the coastline and through the valley. People will be bumping into each other, falling more, and kids are going to get hurt. We need a big enough skate park to fit everyone. I think the skate park should be 20,000 square feet. If this takes two to three years, we're going to need a temporary park in that time, and that's when you can use your 12,500-square-foot EIR on the temporary park. Tom Char left Malibu because he needed something bigger and better, a world-class skate park where he could mark his name in the skating history books. I don't want another thing, I don't want another kid like Tom Char, or any of these talented kids here moving away, because we don't have a world-class skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Andy Lyon. Are your people who gave you minutes here, Lexi, Glider, Maggie? Is that Maggie? Okay, six minutes.
Okay, six minutes, nice. How these kids write down stuff and make sense, I should take notes from them. You know, last, six weeks ago, when we had the meeting here, and there were so many more kids, unfortunately, it's like 4 o'clock, and they're, you know, I don't know, school just started, and we don't have all the kids that were here last time to see what was going on and really say what they want. But it's unfortunate, because they sort of left thinking we're going to get a skate park like right away, and this, this is not the case, by the way, of your, your timeline, like nine months. Actually, I thought that the email that I got through Skylar and Reva said that the lease up on the temporary spot was until 2020 December, 2020, not May. But whatever, I'm going to go through this agenda right now, and I put up a picture of where I think a temporary spot should go. But, you know, this has been going on for a long time. I got kids that are almost 30 that were skating at Papa Jack's, and now my little guy is going to be two, and I, if, he's not going to get anything going, you know? 2012 is when we started this whole process, you know? And as far as like the temporary, well, it's funny, because like Gold and Gillen speaking, we wouldn't have those houses up there if they hadn't given the 1.7 acres as a development deal to get that going, and I appreciate not wanting to have a skate park right there, and I appreciate the $100,000, because that could go towards paving this property right here, the triangle, the island, which would be a much better temporary spot that could be done right away. You know, these numbers, too, spending money out of the skate park, you know, a lot of that money going towards parking lot stuff up at the Bluffs Park, 5,000 square feet with 50,000 square feet of parking, that's just ridiculous. I mean, you underestimate the amount of skateboarders here. If, you know, if you're talking about making ball fields, you, all of a sudden, yes. You, all of a sudden, we need all these baseball fields, we need all these soccer fields, we need, and the numbers never like support that, but for the skateboarding, we're going to downgrade and say, because some experts say we could get by with a 5,000 or 7,000-square-foot skate park or a 12,000-square-foot. That's just not, not right, and staff shouldn't be dictating it. We should be listening to these little kids, listening to these guys, right? Yes. So as far as, I know there's issues on this island property. The city bought it, and they bought it with Measure R funds for parking. One of the things is park and ride. Parents are going to park, the kids are going to ride. Let's switch the acre that is required, and you can do this, I mean, I know you can do it, you're going to say you can't do it, but I know you can, because Chili Cook-Off needs an acre of parking. Got an acre here. You were going to sell two acres off of Chili Cook-Off to the fire department, whatever, it's there. You could move the parking from this, put it over there. This is a much better location for a temporary spot, much bigger, you could put, you know, the, pave it, you know, with Mr. Gillen's paving expertise, you could have this thing done tomorrow. The thing is, is that we've got this timeframe of like nine months. The emergency for the Southern Cal Edison Lay Down Yard, no permits, no Esha review, no EIRs, no nothing, it was done over a weekend. Nobody seems to know who did it. I mean, all of a sudden, we've got this, basically a parking lot, right below, right above this, that was now just retroactively permitted last Monday at the planning commission. So why you can't bend the rules for these kids, get something done tomorrow? This place, that lot right now is flat, it's ready to go, it's disturbed, there was a driveway down it, you could use it right away, right away. Switch the acre that you need for parking, go to the other side. Who knows, take the million from the parking that they don't want, I mean, for the park up at Bluffs, if they don't want, for the skate park fund, and start buying off the requirement of that bond money for that. I'm sure there's a plenty of people that would rather have it right here in the center of town, they can drop their kids off, the kids can go to Subway, they can go to Ralph's, they can go to the emergency room right across the street if they have to. You know, they can go to Whole Foods, they can do everything. Up at the Bluffs Park, you're sort of there. I think that this is like a great spot, and really, you need to just like, you know, let's just turn our backs on all this review stuff and design and warmout and whatever these guys and design for, just pave it flat, let these kids figure it out. We don't need to, you know, the city's so stupid, they sold all the Papa Jack's ramps for junk, so that's why they know they can get them for cheap. But, you know, let these kids figure out what they want to do. I'm sure, all these people have like quarter pipes and rails and stuff sitting in their garage, they just want to get rid of. Bring it down, decide what they want to do on this thing. Give the kids the island property. You can do it. I know you can do it, three of you need a phone, just do this thing. Have it done tomorrow. You did it for Southern Cal Edison. Edison is down there, they're just, there's no emergency down there now, that they got an emergency permit. For these kids, it's an emergency. Nine months later, you're going to make some, you're going to waste a bunch of money up there and make a temporary park, that, then they're going to get stuck with nothing. These kids are going to get stuck with just junk, and they're never going to, you're never going to do anything. Get something from now.
Next up is David Charvey, then Heather Gardner, and then Leila Polito? David left, excuse me. Heather, Leila Polito, and Mary Ann Riggins.
Heather. Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to do this. It's nice to see after five years of doing this with our son, that we're moving on, and I think the kids deserve better than 12,000 square feet. It's been, as you guys all know, way too long since Papa Jack's has closed. They deserve much more. Mammoth Skate Park, again, epic skate park, rolls with the environment, 40,000, and Finn did a great job of getting all the rest of the numbers for you guys, so you can really get an understanding that 12,000 square feet is not enough. So that's my main concern. Love option B for the temporary, but my other concern is that if we do the temporary, where we're going to do the permanent, what will happen to the, in the interim of doing, you know, we take apart the temporary, what's going to happen to the permanent? We're going to be waiting for the permanent, then we're going to be here again, going, when is the permanent going to be developed? And I think that there would probably be a better option, might be more financially profitable, or just make more sense if we purchase the temporary equipment that we could relocate later to another location. Once the permanent area gets started, we had another place that we were going to move the temporary, so, and that actually becomes a permanent also, possibly. If it works, like maybe Heather Cliff, like Skylar mentioned at the last meeting, or the Triangle space, we can continue there. But I just don't see how a temporary on the same location as the permanent is going to make sense when you start developing the permanent. So that for me was like a huge red flag after the meeting, which was very successful, and I was very happy about, but that was a big thing for, for me, wondering about that. Also, when you guys do your community outreaches, I think it's really effective, maybe to get like 10 representatives of kids to give you some options, or do a survey of options that's quick and easy, and then once you know, like, what people want the most, present maps of like, here are the options, what's your favorite? Instead of, then we, I think that's more time-effective, as far as gathering community data, then we don't get stuck in the gathering. data, then we don't get stuck in the gathering. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. Next up, Leila Polito, followed by Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Suzanne Goldeman.
Hi, my name is Leila Polito. You've heard from a lot of guys, it's time for you've heard from a girl skater. This is why we need not only a skate park, but a big one. What's special about Malibu is that the girls skate too. When you go to Westlake or other skate parks, it looks like a male-dominated sport. But in Malibu, when you hang out with girls, you skate. We need a large park to accommodate both girl and boy skaters. One of the selling points of my house is the massive garage is big enough to have my friends over to skate. We skate almost every single day. So please take this into consideration when determining the size of our skate park in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila. Okay, next up, Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Suzanne Goldeman, followed by Mike Gardner. And the final slip I have is from Chris Wyatt.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. I'm really excited. I've been asking to see this get on an agenda and move forward for years now, so I'm really happy to see it on here. I like what one of the previous speakers said about the temporary being able to possibly be relocated to one of the other parks or lands that we have after it's used for the temporary. So maybe that's something that we can be discussing. I think there's a lot of confusion about using some of the other lots. What the benefit of the Bluffs Park lot is that it has already been partially studied. So it is something that we can move forward on faster. If we start looking at these other lots, we're going to have to do environmental review on those. And so it is going to delay possibly any even temporary facilities being put in there. One of my big concerns about the island lot, one, there is the financial aspect of it. I think if we want to take that requirement of parking off of there, we need to do some fundraising in the community, find some money and pay off that debt and so the city can own it instead of having the Measure R funds. So I don't know if that's something that we can even explore, if that's even an option that we can pay back that money and then use it for our own use. And the other concern I have about the island property is I walk to Legacy Park every single day. That intersection is a nightmare. It is dangerous and it scares me to think that parents and others will be dropping their kids off on Legacy Park side. Kids are not going to want to wait for the crosswalks all the time. There's a huge amount of Z traffic that's going through there and I'm just worried about somebody getting hurt. There's not enough improvements on the Stewart Ranch Road aspect and there's not enough improvements on the Civic Center west side. And so it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen literally and I don't want to see a child injured there. So I'd like to see us move forward with the Bluffs option right now for the temporary. And, you know, having multiple parks, maybe we need a couple, you know, be studied up on the west end of town and a larger world-class one in the center. I agree that the 12,000 is probably way too small for our area considering how many people we're going to attract. Even Venice is crowded. Every time I go down there, I see a ton of people in there. So I think it's realistic to expect that we need probably closer to 20,000 minimum for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Suzanne Goldeman, then Mike Gardner, then Chris Wyatt.
Good afternoon. I am a member of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm speaking for myself today. It said that perfect is the enemy of good. The Parks and Rec Commission, the staff, the city council, we've all wrestled long and hard with trying to find a way of getting a skate park as quickly as possible. It's complicated right now with the, the money being tied up with the Woolsey Fire. I think we all recognize that the 12,000 square foot solution is not perfect, but at least it'll get our kids a skate park within, you know, a reasonable timeframe before Owl and Glider are off to college. So let's start there. The B plan is, seems to have the support of the community and it sounds like a good plan. I love the idea of reusing that equipment for a satellite park in, at the west end of Malibu. And, you know, it's, if we want something big and world-class, we're all going to have to pull together and push for it. But at least this 12,000 square foot temporary park is within our reach and our kids can be there before the next summer arrives. So let's go ahead and do that and keep that, the permanent park, you know, not on the back burner, front and center so we can move forward wherever the best place is. But this is an opportunity to get something now. It may not be perfect, but it's better than what we've got. And let's stop calling this the Cromer property or the Case property. This is our park now. It's part of Bluffs Park, it belongs to us. So, you know, let's use it and get this done.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mike Gardner, followed by Chris Wyatt.
First of all, thank all of you for being so positive about trying to make this happen soon. A couple of comments. We have visited a skate park up in Haley, Idaho, which is a really great skate park. It's 12,500 square feet. Their population is 7,900 people and Malibu has 12,800. They don't have the tourism we do and I think we're going to need a bigger park to accommodate people who are going to come here. You guys have heard how much we all travel to go to other parks and multiply that with the tourism that's going to be coming through. People are going to come visit Malibu just for that skate park. So please try to get a bigger. I'm curious to know why we can't do a two-phase park. Right now, Santa Monica, the Cove is undergoing a second phase addition to their skate park. They started with one, they had future plans to expand, they took surveys of what the kids wanted and now they're expanding it. Why can't this 12,000 go bigger by doing phase one on the property that's currently owned and then tie in an addition on the parcel that becomes owned later? I want to know if that's a feasible option. That's it. And one last thing, the Westlake Skate Park, we go over there quite a bit, that's 6,500 square feet, it's relatively small. I hear my son complain when there gets to be, I'd say more than about 15 to 20 people, people's lines start getting crossed, the injury rate I think goes up when you have too crowded of a skate park. I can imagine on a good summer day, if we built a large skate park, we could have upwards of 30 to 40 skaters there at any given time. So I think it needs to be big enough to accommodate a fair number of kids, otherwise the injury rate I think goes up quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Chris Wyatt? And after that, that's the final slip I have unless anybody else has not turned theirs in yet.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Wyatt. I have a skateboarding school. Skateboarding is my business, quite literally. Today, I've been to three skate parks, I've skated with five children and, I mean, I spend thousands of hours discussing like the right way to skate. And that's kind of what I stand for and I think that's what the city needs to stand for as well, doing it correctly, safely and respectfully for everybody. Just like they've been saying with the square footage, Westlake, 6,500 square feet, it's tight. You get one type of skater there, it's either beginners or the advanced and they clash if you can't. And the young lady speaking here, it's awesome to see because I get more female little girl skaters than little boy skaters. The sport is changing, it's got to be more inclusive for all levels. I was just up at the Santa Clarita Skate Park today. Incredible. It's a landmark, it's monumental, and I think that's what the park needs to be. That one's 40,000 square feet. It's huge. It's a dreamland for a skater. That's probably the top tier. I mean, I think at least there needs to be 25,000 square feet towards the permanent park so all level skaters can go. The beginner skater as well as the old pro. You know, it's got to have 10, I've mapped 10 or 12 different features at the park. What they're doing now is incredible with the technologies, even the pump tracks, which speaks to kind of his idea about maybe adding on something else later. Maybe it starts with one and the addition can be something unique and original like the pump track. But I think it needs to reflect the community and the landscape and the art. The temporary park, I don't think it needs to be that complicated. By tomorrow, I mean, you need a couple essential ramps, about five key things you're going to want at the park. I've already looked on at the pre, the builders who pre-build these ramps and for under $10,000 you can get everything you need. It's all about the positioning, you know, it's how you do it, it's not what you're doing. Same thing, I think, quality over quantity. I'd personally rather have less square footage, but it done right. So for the permanent park, take your time, you know, my recommendation and really talk to the professionals. I can give you any recommendations. These people know what they're talking about. Temporary one, get something going. By next week, ramps could be delivered and up and going. I think the community, you know, needs to be heard with the amount of space with it though. But definitely more square footage and integrating all levels of skateboarding in these parks. Not just throwing something down and calling it a day, but actually doing something that can last for 50 years and that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, Hamish Patterson. And is there anybody else who has not turned in a slip yet?
Good evening, council members. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I realized that the adult skaters are not being represented here. I'm 50 years old, I go down to Venice, skate regularly, mix it up with the youth, with the old guys. And I, I can't sit and be greedy on this, this get more. We got 12,500 square feet that's got an EIR that's ready to rock and roll. It's plenty of space, it's 100% adequate. I'm a Burnside guy. Burnside's less than 12,000 square feet. It's one of the best skate parks on the planet. This guy just mentioned Haley, Idaho. That thing is off the charts radical. So when we talk about it, we have creative skate design. I can't get behind us getting greedy here. If we wanted, we're not, if we're talking world-class and this whole world-class thing, that's a different discussion. We're talking about land concrete so that we have somewhere to take our children that is safe. We start postponing these things, do other EIRs and, and, and it just all becomes unraveled. We're going to face enough challenges as a community getting this over the finish line as it is. Personally, I'm not a temporary skate park guy. I don't want to have anything to do with it, but I understand the need with it. At this point, the temporary skate park should have been here for years if that's our concern. But it's not. I see a need to pour concrete, get behind it. And I think Mr. Gillen's corrupt and I appreciate your donation of money. But I think with sound mitigation and proper shrubbery that that can be eliminated too and it can be safely done if that's a big concern. I really just, I just hope the city can move this ball forward and get us aiming towards what needs to be done to get concrete poured because that's the way to go. It's not putting a bunch of money into temporary parks. The numbers up there on temporary parks freak me out. It's, it's a waste of money in my book. All that money should be going to skate park number one. And the one thing I want to address is there's a lot of talk about the Woolsey Fire and the city being strapped for money. That happened in one end of the community. When you, when that gets brought about as a reason not to do something, that discards the rest of Malibu. The rest of Malibu has been patiently waiting for a skate park as well. Our, my house burned down in 93, up lost floors. It's part of our community's story. It's what happens here. So that being a reason to stop or not, it, that can't be a valid reason. But we really do need to move forward with the 12,500, take what we can get, run with it. We know politics. We unravel the ball, we're lost again. So please, let's do 12-5, let's get it moving. Thanks.
Thank you, Hamish. Okay, that concludes public comments and we can open it up for council comments. Who would like to go first?
I'll go. Unless somebody else wants to go. Okay, first of all, I appreciate everybody coming. Great comments from everybody, especially down where the rubber meets the road, the people are actually doing the skating, there's a lot of great ideas that came out of that. And the adults too, even up to Hamish, there are some very good comments. And I think Suzanne Goldeman, when she said, "Perfect is the enemy of good," is kind of what we're wrestling with here. I think that the advantage of the temporary, doing a temporary one is that it gives us a chance to evaluate a number of things. The location, the size, the traffic flow, the impact on future neighborhoods, et cetera. Because if we go and put a permanent thing and it's like, wow, we didn't think about this or we didn't think about that and it, you know, does, just doesn't work here, would have been working in a better place. If we do the temp thing, then we can say, you know, this, this location may be completely inadequate. There's another space in Malibu that's better for it. So that's the advantage of the temporary thing. Am I, my question for you is, am I reading you right in that of the two options you gave? The option A would be a smaller one and the option B could be a bigger one up to the 12-5? Is that what I understand from you?
Kind of, partially what you said is true. So yes, option A is what would be a smaller option based on what we, we put in the report. The reason that option B is so much bigger is that we're laying a flat lot. And so you would put these elements on it, but you would also want to have enough room to skate around. And so Papa Jack's was very similar in that that actual lot was over 19,000 square feet and you wouldn't think it when you look at it, but then you see the elements and how they're laid out, just to give a little bit more room. That's not, the entire, every inch of that surface wouldn't be covered in different elements.
And it sounds like option B also, because they're somewhat modular, pardon my ignorance, may be flexible in terms of you could rearrange them, you know, and see what, which works better, which may also help the evaluation process as to what a permanent park might be.
Yes, that's, that's absolutely accurate. You heard a couple of the speakers mention the cost of the equipment is significantly cheaper than the cost of an X-Games style skate park would be. And then additionally with that, that lot would be utilized for parking if, assuming we do a temp, a permanent skate park on that same lot, we would keep that asphalt, we could sell the equipment and essentially not lose that money where you would with an X-Games style park. You take it down, it's gone.
Or maybe we could rearrange that, relocate that equipment to a different part of Malibu. We may find out that, hey, what the heck, we want to have more than one skate park as part of the evaluation process.
Absolutely.
Okay, and to the contractor, you talked about an RFP, we wanted to send out an RFP for both the temp and the permanent one at the same time. Are we comfortable with it, with having the appropriate contractor at this stage of the game? Because I think part of the evaluation process, and the reason I say this is my son builds pump tracks for bicyclists and he's been doing it for a long time and he's an expert. He knows what he's doing, he's world-renowned. And the tales he tells me about other contractors who supposedly know what they're doing and they don't know what they're doing are somewhat hair-raising. So is the, another advantage of the temp process to sort of ferret out whether a contractor that we chose to do it is worth, worth it? Or am I ignorant and there's only like three or four guys who can make these things?
No, no, let me, let me clarify that because I know there was a lot of information in the presentation and I apologize. We go through how much do we give out, not from hiding it, just how much can you process in a couple-minute presentation to make it clear. So with a temporary one, to make sure that that gets moving quickly, we would do an RFP for a design build, which essentially combines the design and build together into the process. With option B, that would be a much less labor-intensive process from the design perspective because we're lit, we're planning a lot and putting temporary pieces on it. With the permanent skate park, the design and build are separate aspects. And so what we would do is we would solicit the RFP as quickly as possible for the design part, but the build component you couldn't do until you had a thought on the design and specific size and the way that was going to go. So there are two different processes that are done separately, but our plan would be to have the temporary park up and running as quickly as possible while working on a permanent one if that's the, the will of the council.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that. And I assume that you're getting input from our local experts who obviously are quite knowledgeable in the skateboard realm more so than me and maybe you even.
Yes, if we were, and for temporary, I'm just saying, in a temporary option, we would definitely reach out to the public and try to get input. Definitely, most likely not to the, the scale of a permanent one. A permanent one is going to be so collaborative and there will be meetings and so many people involved with a temporary one, we would try to reach out to people in the know that could give us some detail on how to do it quickly so that we didn't muddy the process with bureaucracy.
Okay, great. Yeah, I agree with Chris Wyatt's comments about, you know, the permanent one should be deliberative and we should think about it, get a lot of input, et cetera. And I also appreciate Hamish's reality check on sort of the top end. Everyone wants like, oh, we want 100,000 square foot and whatever, you know? I mean, there are reality of what we have to do, but I think that's also the, the value of having the prototype being built and say, well, we definitely need something larger than we had thought. Want to ask the city manager a question about this because Judy Vialbonca did submit a comment and she said, you know, only submit, only have the city spend X amount of money for the temp and have the town raise it. What are your thoughts on that? What are your thoughts on that, about the funding for the temp as opposed to the permanent? Can you comment on that at all? And, you know, the potential for community involvement and donations, et cetera?
Right now, we have $1,022,000 available for use for this parcel, for the Case Crummer parcel. And I agree with whoever said it, we should find a different name, but for the moment, that's what we'll be referring to it as. I think if the council decides this evening that they want to move forward with a temporary skate park at that location, my recommendation would be just to keep the process moving as quickly as possible, would be to use the funds that we have on hand, and then proceed with a robust fundraising campaign for a permanent skate park later on. But that does take a lot of time, and certainly, we all feel that time is of the essence, and we want to get a temporary site in as quickly as possible. So in my opinion, it would be best to do it that way. I'm also hopeful that all of my dire predictions about financial issues as a result of the fire will turn around as we get further into the fiscal year, and we'll be in a better fiscal shape, so it won't hurt as much.
Okay, thank you very much for that. That's pretty much all my comments. The other thing, of course, that can be evaluated during the prototype and location thing is what was mentioned by a number of people here, is participation by people other than the residents of Malibu, especially on the weekends and stuff, where we may find that one location would be better than another if it really gets super popular, which I suspect it will be. And those are all my comments. Thank you very much for the answers.
Thank you, Rick. Who'd like to go next?
Skylar? Excuse me? Oh, Jefferson? I don't know. All right, Skylar, you want to go? Maybe you will.
Sure. All right. So I had a couple, first off, I'm happy that we're at this place. It's frustrating for me, because I was part of that conversation in 2012, I think in 2011, too, where we actually like really got to the point of almost getting a design for something, and then did not happen. So with this park, if we go with option B for temporary, and we had a brief conversation about this, Jesse, but it would seem to me that it would be smart to design that lot in a way that could later become a parking lot, and that that would be then the parking lot for a permanent facility, if a permanent facility goes next door, or if the temporary site gets moved, then you use that. So you're not just blowing, you know, $100,000 in concrete or asphalt, and that there's some sort of like method to how that's done in terms of planning. Scott, is your, I had a question for you, if you want to come up to the mic real quick, just to be, I was a little bit unclear, but what I understood from you is that you'd be willing to offer $100,000 towards the building of a temporary skate park so long as it's not on that parcel? Or, I just want to understand what you said correctly.
What I said was, I was concerned of the safety of crossing the street. And if you put the temporary skate park there, as long as I'm done with construction, I would donate the $100,000, or I would do $100,000 for the work. I don't want to be part of donating money to what I believe is a major problem. Or if you want to put it somewhere else, I'd donate that money now.
Okay, so your timeline on construction is what?
You know, the fire put us back, the rain put us back. We're, I mean, we're going very, very fast, and we could go faster. I couldn't be done soon enough. It could be, I don't know.
Realistically, say a couple of years?
No, no.
Realistically, to say a year?
If I stay on track, I could be done without any real blocks in one year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Scheduled November 20, 2020 would be completion, which won't happen, but January, February would definitely happen, if we stay where we're at now.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, with knowing that, I don't know if we'd be able to use that or whatnot to stick to the timeline that we're on here. And I think that the city is well-equipped fiscally enough to deal with this and happening, and sticking to the city's timeline. That would be six to nine months, is that correct, Reva? Depending on our direction tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so I would entertain the idea of putting a temporary site on there using option B, and put that forward as an item right now, just in terms of the temporary for discussion by the council, at this expansion of Bluffs Park.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I'm curious to hear your guys' thoughts, specifically in regards to putting a concrete or asphalt surface down that would later be used as a, could potentially be used as a parking lot, but in the meantime would be used as a temporary facility to be opened by beginning of summer 2020, on this site.
Are you asking us?
Yes.
Okay. I'll comment on that.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, and it sounds like what you're concerned about is, and which was expressed by some of the speakers, is that when we move from temporary to permanent, that we're not skate park-less for a period of time. And I think that's a valid concern, especially if we get everyone addicted to skate parks. So maybe a way to skin that cat is, and I hear what you're saying about maybe put it where the parking is, and then you can move it over type of thing, but I think that if we take all the temporary kit and make another temporary spot in one of these other fine pieces of property that we bought, we should be able to do that for the interim, then maybe that's the appropriate solution. But having it where it's going to be provides us actually a really good evaluation of that site and the traffic flow, et cetera.
Alex, if you could hear me, could you put the map up showing the color coordination of the former site? And then if you could add the, perfect. So I don't know, to me, the smarter place to put the skate park would be closer to what would be civic, or I mean, Malibu Canyon. Like, if you're looking at this map, it would be up to the left or to the west on the site there. And to, if you were to pave approximately 12,500 square feet area of that, that still allows for, one, a lot of parking while that's on-site, on-gravelled, or whatever else the other DG surfaces to the east of that. And then allows for, to have existing parking and development if you decide to build a permanent park in the middle of that or to the right of that later, when you acquire the other land, where you could construct that park at a size that would be determined and still have parking. So I think that that kind of allows us to have the parks continuous, if, as that's part of the concern. But I mean, I think we're, we don't even have a park yet, so let's worry about getting something, you know, and move, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. If we had to work with the county and move it temporary, if we said, you know, hey, for six months, we need to do construction here, and we need to move these ramps to beach parking lot X, or whatever, I think that that would be feasible at that time, but we're not even there yet.
Councilmember Peak, one of the things that might be helpful for the council, if that's the priority for the council, is to make sure that if we put in a temporary site, that there isn't a gap in the ability for park users to use it if a permanent skate park is developed, is just to provide us that direction to-
You're getting provided that direction.
Yeah, to come up with a design that allows for that, and we can certainly work that out with the consultant when we get somebody on board.
I would suggest that. The other thing in regards to this that was brought up was the size and talking about the triangle that Andy's referencing. Is there a way by which this property could be exchanged? And we could have the parking up here that's park and ride at Bluffs, and get the triangle and put it there. For a long time, people have said that that would be a better location for the skate park. I don't, I mean, it seems like maybe it would be, but it also seems like we bought that land with certain money, and I don't know how that can be moved around and what that takes, and if it's possible, and I'm just asking the question.
So we purchased, and you're assuming the island parcel is what you're asking about, yes. So the island parcel is 1.1 acres, and we purchased it with funding from Los Angeles County Metro funding, and it is deed restricted with covenants that require it to be used for transportation-related purposes. So if the city wanted to do something different with it, we would actually have to refund those funds, the $3.1 million back to Los Angeles County. And it's not a fast process, if that's something we choose to do. I can certainly ask about relocating the one acre to another lot, but we pay different prices for different properties, so that would have an impact on it. And anything that has to do with this funding source has to go not only to the Metro Board, but to a preliminary committee and the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. So what I'm hearing, the priority is, is the timeline, and I don't think I could do, we could do anything in a rapid timeline on that parcel.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Reva. So again, in regards to the temporary, I would support us doing a 12,500 square foot lot of concrete or asphalt surface with the ramps that were suggested in option B, I don't know. And I would like us to see to go out to an RFP for that.
Let me clarify what you're saying. Isn't the 12,500 the skate parkable area, and the actual lot might be bigger than that?
Yes, that, in the proposed option B, we did propose 16,000 to 18,000 for that area. And I apologize for not having a map, but if you look at this, where the pointer is, right along this line roughly, and all the way over here, is that 16,000 to 18,000 square foot mark. So that would be an area that we would plan to utilize, at least in our potential thoughts of using that for parking if the permanent park were to go on the other side. So that, the 12,500 generally is just related to the permanent skate park. We had actually proposed a touch bigger for the concrete that would essentially become the parking lot. And the reason for that is, in researching the size of Papa Jack's, we were pretty floored to see how large that lot was in the equipment that was there. So we wanted to make sure not to shrink that down too much and cause panic.
One of the other things that you could certainly give us direction on would be a dollar amount max, and tell us to, you know, maximize the space and not make a decision as the square footage at this point. We understand that everybody would like it as large as possible, and we could certainly get the best bang for our buck with the money that we're allocated.
But don't we, can't we not build it bigger than 12,500, because then we've got to do a different EIR?
Correct, but what Jesse's referring to was less than that, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, so this is the confusing part. So let's talk temporary first. So with the vacant lot where we had said 16,000, 18,000 square feet, we believe that while that's bigger than what the permanent skate park would be, that that was going to be parking that was studied in the original EIR as parking anyways, significantly bigger than that if you actually look at the map. So we don't believe that will be an option as far as putting down asphalt or concrete for a temporary park, even though it's bigger than 12-5.
So there's no constraint with that. Essentially, you could put in the asphalt right now for the entire parking lot, which would probably be the smartest thing to do.
We believe that we could do that, yes. But what I will say is that the original project did study shutting down Winter Mesa and turning that into parking, and I can show you that here. And the reason we would say, be cautious, is that we most likely, you can see the skate park right here, and this EIR dips a little bit over to Winter Mesa. So we would probably, we would adjust that to fit more within the property. So I would hate to pave it and then have to go back and turn part of it up if we did have to shift over a little bit.
So I don't know, I'm curious to hear from you, Mikey.
Mikey, please.
Thank you, Skylar. Karen, first of all, thanks so much for everyone coming out and for your emails and conversations, and you have to the bathroom? I'm just kidding. Hang on, I'll let you get a chance at that. So of course, we get here, and there's big decisions to make. Nothing's ever easy on skate parks in Malibu. Even since I was a little kid, we've been talking about it. So I know it's been active since 2011.
The only thing that's big is the lack thereof.
Yeah, there you go. This is decades-long. But thank you to all of the speakers, it really does make a difference. I think, let me talk about the temporary first. I think option B is the obvious choice. I think the parking lot idea that has been described by Jesse makes perfect sense. We're going to need parking there anyhow. It puts a perfect surface to put down, to put a temporary park on, an option B. And I would wonder in that, without wasting time on it, because with option B, what I like is, we are able to skate now, and then we can, we do have options with that equipment later, moving it, as was suggested, and we'll have plenty of time to go through whatever process that takes, or selling it, because we don't want to, we want to do something else, say at Heather Cliff, for example. So I'm wondering if, on the temporary, it's clearly not one thing, and I saw you had a price tag on it, if there's options that could be presented decently, quickly on prices to do option B. And I don't know how much of that included the actual parking lot itself from your estimate.
So ironically, the significant portion of that cost, which was $230,000 to $270,000, was for the laying down the lot itself. The equipment itself, compared to the overall price, is relatively inexpensive, and that option that we costed, the 230,000 to 270,000, is concrete. It anticipated some issues where we may have to reinforce it with rebar in certain spots, and even get a, depending on the level of intricacy, a design person to design it. We think that asphalt would be significantly cheaper, and I don't want to put a cost on it, but enough to matter, and just the equipment is not the large part of that cost. I would say $40,000 would probably get us a good chunk of the way there, and just based on our research with mini ramps and other items.
Is there a reason we wouldn't go with asphalt over concrete? You don't see a lot of concrete parking lots, really.
We weren't thinking of it from that perspective. We were thinking of it from the best skating surface. And there's many arguments. Concrete that's used in skate parks is generally much finer and smoother, similar to how asphalt would be when you poured it. Just, there are so many moving parts to it. Sometimes we come up with a good ideas towards the end of the process, and so we wanted to make sure that it was presented as an option here tonight. But yeah, asphalt would probably be the best option in our opinion as well.
All right, which would significantly reduce the cost. The one other thing I want to share that is, you know, not worthy of additional conversation right now, is that members of the public, Scott, Gillen aside, have already pledged 600,000 additional dollars. I don't think a lot of people know that. So we have already verbally raised another over half a million dollars. So we're, and that money feels legit. Of course, it's not in the bank yet, but, so there seems to be, and there's more people that are trying to step forward to help. So it looks like, there's a hand going up right there, so thank you. You can leave the check right there. No, I'm kidding. But so, I wanted to share that news, because I think it's great news. And so there's no financial part of the Woolsey fire that's related to this at all. This money's separate, this is different. So, and this is obviously something of great community interest. I just wanted to bring that up. So I'm in favor on temporary and option B, because I don't see a downside at all. I don't see it actually really taking much away from the permanent park and allowing people to skate in the meantime. And so I think that's big. My concern on going for the larger park is, of course, running into a problem in the EIR. Let's say Scott and Robert put up a big fuss, or I don't know what could happen. So I worry about that. So I do want to ask Reva about the idea of, if we approved on the permanent side of 12-5 and doing a separate EIR to expand it later, how does that look? How does that work? Or maybe that's a Christie question.
I'm going to hand that over to Bonnie Blue.
All right, Bonnie Blue question, perfect.
If we're talking about the sequoia process, and of course Christie should weigh in as she sees fit, the EIR for the Crummer project, if the project changes, a supplemental EIR could be prepared, or it could be, if it's something minor in nature that doesn't result in new impacts, it's possible that an addendum could be completed for that, or even just a subsequent sequoia document. It would just depend on the scale of what's proposed.
So let me, ma'am, let me just jump in because not everybody speaks our same language. The law is, is that you have to understand what the environmental impacts of the project are before you do it. So the current EIR tells us what the environmental impacts would be if we had a skate park up to 12,500 square feet on that particular property. We understand what the biological impacts and the view shed impacts and the parking impacts and the traffic circulation, all of that has been looked at for that parcel. So if you were going to do anything else, it may not be a huge impact, there may be an impact, we just have to analyze it. If there's any evidence that it might be, you know, a traffic impact, or there might be some other, some escha around, or whatever it is, we would address it through a study. If it turns out when we look at it that there's no evidence that there's any other impact, then we would go a shorter sequoia route, either an exemption or a negative declaration. But the point being is that we just, the reason we're saying that that has, it's already been done, the analysis. So we would have to do a new analysis if there was a new proposal.
Right, and what I was asking is sort of that, but asking about if we did the already approved 12, 5, and started a separate for additional square footage, what would, I understand it's its own separate deal, correct?
Yeah, under, under sequoia, we would be able to look at the delta. So if we had a-
Can you explain the word delta? Is that the place where water flows, or?
Environmentalist.
Different delta.
The, you know, the difference between what's being proposed and what's already been studied. So it could be very minor, if you're just adding, you know, 3,000 square feet in essentially the same place, and it won't trigger any additional parking requirements, that kind of, it might be just a, you know, a minor, that's what the directors were saying, referring to, oh, we might do an addendum, you know. For us, that just means we looked hard at it, we figured it out, we typed up the analysis, we, you know, made it available to the public. If there's something that triggers, you know, more concern, like the 5,000 or 6,000 extra square feet or doubling the size of it and going a lot closer to the bluff, or a lot closer to the highway, or something like that, then we might need more analysis. So just to, we'll take a look at whatever you come up with, because we have to.
So that is potentially theoretically a viable option.
Yes, that's sequoia there to help you figure out what the viable options are. The only thing I think they're concerned about for the temporary park is the timing. Because it adds, the, an additional environmental review requires circulating the analysis to the public and taking input and having public hearings. So that's the issue. For the permanent one, we're going to do the public hearings anyways. So it's-
Right, no, I wasn't, I was not thinking of expanding the temporary, I'm more talking about the permanent now. About going with the 12, 5, because we know we have it, and then starting an EIR to see about expanding it. And so we definitely have something. My, here's my concern. We haven't studied any of the other new land we bought yet. So that process is not going to go quick. I haven't found that it's gone quick in any of our other purchases. So I'm a little worried about opening that can of worms, and then it's going to be eight years later, and, you know, there's going to be a lot of demand with a lot of the land in Malibu. Well, there should be, from community pools, to soccer fields, to cultural arts. And it's a lot to figure out three different parcels, the Chili Cook Off, Heathercliff, I, I don't know where we're at on Trankis, we have the Triangle Lot, which, you know, looks like it's pretty locked in on parking. I understand it's 3.2 million, 3.1 million dollars to buy that out. That doesn't seem like a great avenue, even though I love that lot too. So I'm a little worried personally about switching gear, and I like the idea of getting a good sized temporary park now. I like the idea of going forward at the 12, 5, while also going forward with an EIR to expand it another 8,000 square feet. Scott, I did want to say, I very firmly, based on being in the skating industry for over 30 years, can tell you that there are definitely great landscaping methods to minimize noise impacts. Because I understand that could be a concern of yours, and I, I just want to address that. So there's some great things done to baffle sound with nature and make it look really good. I just wanted to bring that up because I'm sure it's a concern of yours. And I agree a concern on the, the road there, which is why I like the idea of the parking lot being on the west side of that piece of property, because that way we could direct people to turn in before the permanent skate park. Now, I know that's where the temporary will go, but we'd have to do some safety measures there, I'm sure. But I would seem like ultimately that makes a lot more sense to me. And yeah, I think if we can get, in my opinion, from everything I've seen and talking to my own experts, which I know a lot of them, being in that industry for decades, as well as some of you, 20,000 would be a great start, and it has nothing to do with having another park in Malibu, in my opinion. And in personal opinion, I can totally see having one at Heathercliff as part of that, when we have that community process as well. But that's just my personal opinion. And I think with that, I'll, thank you, Karen.
Can I ask Mikey a question?
Yeah, sure.
Just, so you would be in favor of the temporary at 12, 5, and then you would like to see a permanent come back at 20?
Sort of.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what I understood what you said.
Temporary, build the parking lot, put the temporary ramps in there, at whatever size makes sense that Jesse talked about. But it'll be, obviously be big enough to be a lot of fun and have a lot of good equipment in it.
I just want to clarify again that the temporary option for B we had proposed was 16,000 to 18,000 for the parking lot.
Right.
Based on what we had seen at Papa Jack's.
Or larger.
Okay.
So, so the temporary will be a great size, and it's temporary, and we're not going to spend a ton of money on it ultimately. And then I'm suggesting we should think about 12, 5 for the permanent while I'm starting an additional look at whether we need an EIR, or what we need a negative declaration, an additional 8,000 for an eventual total of, of a 20,000 square foot park.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, Jefferson, are you with us for a comment?
He lost it, he hasn't come back since earlier.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead. I want to thank everybody for coming, for being so involved. Thank you to all the kids for being here. I know school starts tomorrow, so hope you don't mind spending the last afternoon of summer vacation here. I know that the Parks and Rec Commission went through just a lot of deliberation and considerations, and I appreciate all the time they've put into that. And it's never an easy decision, land use for anything. The overwhelming support seems to be for option B, so that, I don't know why we would go against the requests for that and the support for it. I feel like Mikey sort of read my mind on going ahead with option B on the temporary, moving ahead with the 12,500 permanent park, and a separate EIR for an expansion or negative declaration, or whatever that turns out to be. That seems to be a way to check off as many boxes as possible, move this forward. You know, the, the, the struggle is between wanting to move ahead after so many years without a park at all, and wanting it to be the best possible park. And I do have to agree with what Suzanne said about perfection being the enemy of the good. Yeah, we'd all love it if we could have a 50,000 square foot park, but I don't think that's ever going to happen here. So let's work with what we can. So does anybody else have any comments, or do we want to?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Okay, Rick, please.
Also, I want to, you know, it's important to say to all the other people out there, like the little leaguers, and the soccer guys, and the aquatic center people, and everybody else who has a dog in the fight, so to speak, on what we're doing with all these other properties is, we haven't forgot about you. And you may be wondering, what the heck, how did the skate park guys get into the passing lane? You know? It's important to remember that there's funding for this, and there's also an EIR that's been done for it. And that enables us to move forward in a quick fashion. So I just wanted to throw that out there for everybody else who thinks that we have forgot about them. We haven't forgot about you at all. The other comment I want to make is, Mikey, you were kind of saying that you want us to, well, it seems like the, the option B thing gives us maximum flexibility. We can evaluate the spot, the impact, the traffic, the participation by other people, the design, the impact on the future residential neighborhood, et cetera. And also, more importantly, probably, what size do we really want the permanent one to be? So I would just caution you on trying to include at this point any specific numbers, you know, like saying, well, I want to, you know, I'd check it out for additional 8,000. Well, maybe we want additional friggin' 15,000, you know? So I would encourage you to leave off the specifics at this point.
I think it's, I, I think it's important for us to know, Rick, with that, in regards to ER, it's easy for us to, if we came back and we want to make something smaller, but it's very difficult for us if we want to just go and make something bigger without having the capacity built into whatever the sequoia and ERs that's completed. So I would support, I think what, what Mikey said in saying if we're going to do a permanent, look at the EIR to, or alter the EIR, to see if we need to do an, an addendum at 8,000, additional ER for an additional 8,000 square feet to bring it up to 20. It may even make sense just to say, let's shoot for 25 and see what happens with that, you know? Because there's not going to be, I don't think there's going to be much of a difference between looking at that size.
You're saying you want to spend the money on EIR before we really just evaluated whether it's an appropriate site?
I'm not saying we need to spend the money right now, I'm saying that we need to get the things in play to be able to start that process and be very direct with staff as to what we want them to come back with for our future conversations.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I would just caution you to not be too specific in what numbers you throw out there. I mean, I think that part of the evaluation process is to be able to figure out what the needs are. You know, it should be needs driven, not, you know, a number we just kind of pick out of our pocket right now. So that's just my comment. I mean, I'm big on flexibility.
And I want to make sure to either correct or make sure you understood me correctly. The temporary park, no matter what size it is, really has, isn't going to give us a lot of metrics on the permanent park. They're very different parks. So yeah, we might be able to check out traffic flow and things like that, but a concrete park versus skate ramps is a very different experience. And it's gonna, it's gonna attract different people, it's gonna have, it's, it just doesn't, it's just not the same thing. So we're not going to learn what kind of park to build as far as a permanent park from the temporary very well. They're just, they're, they're not, they're not the same. So, and I think another speaker talked about that, that, that knows about skating. So, and that's all good, that's all good, but, you know, the permanent park, you know, getting a world-class designer of which the city's very close to several of them already, it's, it's its own unique, amazing experience. And the temporary is the temporary, and it's still going to be great, and it's going to be fun, and we have plenty of room because we're putting on a parking lot. So that's a, but they're not the exact same thing. And, and I loved what you said about, for everyone else that has community needs on, on the land, yes, you're, you're not forgotten, I think Rick did a great job on that. And why is, why is a skate park fair, besides the fact it's been studied, is that this is the one amenity we have none of in Malibu, zero. We, and I coached soccer for eight years, and I can tell you, there's very few fields to coach soccer on. You find a way and you get it done, at least there are some fields. And I've coached a bunch of other sports, so, but we have no skate presence, and it's mind-blowing for a city our size not to have one, and it's mind-blowing for Malibu not to have one. So I think it doesn't ignore anyone else's needs, that's part of the process, the community was promised when the land was bought with the additional lots. And I, and I will, you know, make sure we uphold that and do a really good job on that, because those other pieces of property are absolute gold, and we're so fortunate to have them. And I appreciate the last council doing it, so no one else's needs are forgotten by me or this council at all.
I would just like to ask if Bonnie, or Jesse, or Reva have any comment on the process that we've been describing, the potential process with the supplemental EIR or something like that?
Yeah, so with the, with the permanent EIR, number one, I want to say we agree that temporary and the permanent, they're, they're completely different things on, on how they'll be built, how they'll be operated, even from the standpoint of how people use them. With the permanent skate park, I will say that we're asking, or we're telling you today, to be clear, that the EIR studied a potential 12,500 square foot skate park. It did not study the exact 12,500 square foot skate park that we would potentially build if you give us that approval. With that being said, to add, to do an addendum to the EIR, because we're moving some things, you know, the same size, but shifting them over is one thing, but if you're to give us direction, hey, 12,500 plus another eight, that's not, that's not what it's about. That would require an additional, some additional work from us. And so I think that that's what could trigger a full review of the sequoia process, if you're pairing those together. The, the better objective, or the better thing to be, would be to do the 12,500 square feet, and then at some point after the park is open, for example, make a determination on how it's going. Do you see the need for additional space? And move forward at that point, because you're, you're essentially tying them together. And that's our fear with doing something over 12, 5 right now, is it could trigger a full review of that. And, and it is tough because it's subjective, it depends on what size you're going with, how will that affect traffic, how much dirt are you moving from the project, just so many things that are a part of that. So it's, that's where the 12, 5 comes from, and I would urge you not to get too much in depth of how much you want to add later on.
And you don't see a way to treat them separately?
So I guess one thing I'm not, I'm not clear on, and I apologize if I'm misunderstanding, are you talking about studying another 8,000 square feet to add to the temporary park in this location? No. So you're talking about making, starting to study the permanent park in this location at a size that includes 8,000 more square feet?
I, I, I'd like to, I guess if I could, you know, be king of Malibu and wave my magic wand, I'd like to get underway on the 12, 5 and do a separate addendum that says, hey, we're contemplating the future, the possibility of adding another 8,000 square foot, we're not doing it right now, we want to study that possibility and what that looks like in terms of ER, or a negative deck, or whatever it is. And go that route and not touch the 12, 5 that we're going with. I don't know if I exceeded the bounds of what's possible, but that would be my magic wand.
So that would be like what Mike Gardner was talking about, the phase one thing, and then add on to it?
Exactly what Mr. Gardner talked about.
Okay, yeah, that makes, now I, now I'm clear, thank you.
So I see it, I'm going to kind of follow the orientation of our staff report for a second so we can kind of work through that. So we agree that we want to have a temporary skate park up at this site, and we want the council to move forward with that, at 12,500 for the skate size, but the pad may be a little bit larger than that, and it's going to be geared towards figuring out parking in the future. If you look at the design that's up here, that, or the last page of our staff report, it shows the old road sort of ending and being altered. Is, do we have to stick with that, or no?
As far as the road being closed?
Like as far as us applying the EIR to our temporary, right? Do we have to close off that road right there, or not?
No, and, and that's where, that's where, okay. So with the temporary park, that, as long as we're staying on the property and reviewing the EIR and what we've seen, we believe that we would just need a CDP and a CUP for a temporary park on the property.
Okay, great. So there's a question in here about cost. So I think we should not exceed $300,000 on the cost of the temporary pad, parking, and skate ramp equipment.
There's a motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
You're just amending.
I'm amending my motion and being clear based on our staff questions. Does that, does that, Jesse, does that cost, does that look like that'll fit in to, you think that that's feasible, or you want us to approve more money?
Yeah. Trick question. I would say, as Reva, as Reva mentioned, it is better to give us a cost, because what we could do is build the asphalt part of the lot out, essentially as far as we deemed appropriate for the potential use of it as parking later on. I do agree that it's probably better to build what we can, but I would do that within reason, because as I said, we could adjust how the skate park goes in that part. So 300,000, if it's asphalt, seems like that would get us a good chunk of the way towards the lot.
Okay.
I think 300,000 will get us.
I think 300,000 will get us the temporary park.
Great. I wish you were certain on that. Just joking.
Well, we need the parking lot anyhow, right? So that's kind of the big deal right there. Yeah, we're putting a temporary skate park on it, but really we're building the parking lot for the permanent park.
It will get us a temporary park. The additional funding would get us more parking because I think you had mentioned earlier, Skylar, that we might as well build the parking lot out as big as we can now if we're going to use it. And that's where that additional would go. 300,000 will absolutely get us the temporary park with an asphalt lot.
Okay, and if you need to come back for 50,000, come back and ask us.
So I just want to make sure everyone understands. We're not just spending money that's going away. We're spending money that's going to mainly go towards the permanent park. I just, because that can be confusing and frustrating. I want to make sure everyone understands that.
Okay. The, just a couple of questions in here are in regards to community matching fund. I don't think that we need to do a community matching fund at this time for a temporary park. And I think, and I don't think that we need to use city staff resources for that, for the temporary park. But I would like to see us, once we decide on the permanent park, move into that realm. So I was going to add in here, because in this, that in regards to the permanent park, that we move forward with looking at the amended EIR process to go with a skate park to be up to, I'm going to say 25,000 feet, that's looked at for a permanent park on the facility and start that process. And then that would mean that we would have to go out for design. I believe we have to go and get designed before we can do the ER. So we have to have a more specific project. So I think we should come up with a, go ahead, Riva.
Oh, go ahead and finish, and then I just want to make sure.
I just want to come up with, go in with a, a permanent skate park, 25,000 square feet on this site and base an EIR off of that process. Because I don't think that, I, I, I think if we go to, and we can always make it a little bit smaller than that, and I don't think that the, it's going to dictate a lot of different requirements. But someone could make an argument that if we wanted to build something that was 20 and, or 25, and we only had it for 20, that the answer would be no. But if we did 25, we could build it that big.
Councilmember Peak, if I could just weigh in on a couple of the items that you mentioned. Regarding the community matching fund, that's not anything that takes any big resources. And so we can certainly move forward with that. And if people have some urge to donate money towards a permanent park, we can just hold those funds. We have collected funds in the past. That's where the $22,000 came from. So just wanted to mention that. The reason we put down, using city resources for fundraising was that I had had a request to use City Hall for an event. And so again, if you want to just approve that, so we have that in the works if someone wants to do that.
The council is at, but that's fine.
And then what I would suggest might be a good path forward for the council this evening is to make the decisions, as you've been giving direction on the temporary skate park, and give staff direction to hold a community meeting on the temp, permanent skate park so that we can kind of hear from everybody. I know there's a lot of people who weren't able to make it this evening because school's starting that may give us some more information. And then we could return with an item specifically to discuss the permanent skate park and getting that moving forward. It's just an option. I know there's a lot of urgency to all of this, but I want to make sure that we include the community.
Okay, I'd like to see a meeting happen in regards to a permanent skate park within the next 60 calendar days. And an item back to council, that would be in the second meeting in October, first meeting in November for a permanent skate park.
Let me make sure I understand what, what you're saying. So you, you want to scrap the 12,500 permanent and just wait and go for a bigger park and see how that chips fall? So you're not worried about that falling apart in any way, say, before?
No, because I think that we have more space up there for parking. And I think that that's really what our issue is going to be. And I think that we can deliver more spots than the 85 that are marked on there. And I think that that's really what our main issue is going to be with having a larger park.
Bonnie, I'd like your opinion on that strategy and what that might entail to not go for the 12,500 and instead go back for 25.
Yeah, I hate to give up the bird in the hand.
Well, I think the city attorney described it best that what we will need to study is, in terms of the SEQA process, is the difference between what we've got analyzed in the existing adopted EIR. And we'll have to look at whether that means, what that SEQA process looks like. We're still in a position to move forward with a 12,500 square foot permanent park regardless because that's already been studied.
The other concern that I just want to bring forward is that if we're going to move forward with additional EIR studies for a permanent skate park, there's funding that's going to be needed for that. And I don't have those numbers for you this evening. And so just if we could move forward with getting a community meeting on the books, organize that, hold that. We can also do an online survey that would get us some good information. And when we come back, maybe just have more information for you might be helpful. So just a suggestion.
That's fine. And if you could just provide any timeline stuff and cost stuff available with that. I mean, I'm not tied to doing it. I just don't want to throw that option out the window if we're going to build this thing. That's sort of where I'm at. I know that Hamish was jumping up and down saying, just build the 12,500, just build the 12,500. And I very much understand that and kind of agree with that. But I also don't want to be, you know, I don't know. I think, I don't think that shortchanging is the right thing. But if we're going to do it, let's do it once right now.
Okay, I have a question to, I guess Bonnie or Christie. What's the feasibility or the projected process to move ahead with what we have, the 12,500, and apply for another, I don't know what you call it, expansion, supplement, addendum? So that, so that we move ahead with the sure thing that we have?
You're basically talking about two projects. And, and that's kind of how the staff, the agendas point, yeah, is set up. So one project is the 12,500 that you've got studied and have cited, and you can move quickly on. And you've now got $300,000 on the table to do it, right? That's, that's project one. And then project two is really much less defined than that right now because it requires more community input. But we, we are looking at something substantially bigger than the temporary and leaving it with some staff direction to get that input, to come up with a better description, bring it back. Once you are satisfied you like the description, then we'll figure out what the environmental review is and get it permitted.
I'll just say, I, I agree with everybody who fears that this temporary park might be there indefinitely. And I don't want to jeopardize the permanent park. I don't want to jeopardize the timing. I understand the desire and the perceived need for a bigger park. I hate to give up what we've already got right now and put the whole thing at risk.
Well, then maybe, me too. I think maybe then, I, I guess, I just, maybe I'm feeling the sense of urgency so much. So we have the temporary, we're going to approve that, it looks likely. We haven't voted yet, but it seems likely, my, in my head. Maybe we should schedule the community meeting within two months and go to that step. It'll delay us two months on the permanent park. But maybe that's actually what we need to do at this point, to Skylar's point. And so everyone can come and we can actually, instead of us sitting up here trying to read your eyes and what you're thinking, we can all actually talk about it and figure this out. Because obviously there are some legal issues involved and time and money, and it all factors together. So I, I guess I would, I would go in that way.
If there's any of the elements of the development of the permanent skate park that we can continue on a parallel track to getting the community meeting started, we'll also do that. You know, staff has been pretty focused on trying to come up with the concept for the temporary skate park. So we actually haven't spent a lot of time on that. But I'll certainly work with Jesse and Bonnie to see what we can get going, have ready to go, certainly keep things moving along. We, we understand the urgency of it, and we'll do absolutely everything we can to, to keep that moving forward.
I don't know that we have, we have Skylar's motion. I don't know if it even got seconded yet, I, the additions, on doing sort of option B to build the parking lot, $300,000 budget. And on top of that parking lot will go the temporary park, option B, still to be defined in what equipment, et cetera, which can also be in a public process. And then the other item we have is to schedule a public meeting with more information from staff within 60 days on, solely on the, is it solely on the permanent park? Or do we also need to talk about anything on the temporary at that meeting? Just be permanent park.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be returning to the city council once consultant or contractor is selected or whatever it is that we need to purchase or studies or whatever it is that we need to get approved by council. So there will be one more item that comes forward to council on the temporary skate park. But that will be hopefully as soon as possible, as soon as we get RFP, RFQ out, we'll be able to get that back to you. But I would foresee that the community meeting would be solely on the permanent skate park. And then again, keeping that moving forward to get back to council with further direction on that as soon as that's concluded. There were a couple other items in the recommended action. So Skylar, you were doing a great job before I interrupted you. If you want to continue down the list after the resources for fundraising.
Look, I just think it's, I think it's wise for council to keep their option open with looking at a bigger park. And I think that the, the two months now, if we can get some feedback on that and make a decision on how we want to move forward, that's probably wise. And I think if you go out there and you visit different skate parks, you're going to get different elements in something that's 20,000 square feet versus something that's 12,000 square feet. And I think that that's a very fair thing to say. And I think that you must recognize in this community, you have skaters that are 50 years old. You have kids that are 16 that want to throw themselves and flip in the air. And you also got three and four-year-olds. So the larger space is going to be able to accommodate that better. And I don't think that anyone's questioning that.
Okay, so what's our motion? We got to work on that.
My motion is to look at, I mean, are we, are we all clear on, if, let's break this into two motions. So my first motion is in regards to the temporary skate park, which is move forward with it, directing staff to come back, send out RFP. Don't spend more than $300,000. If they need more money, come back to us and tell us what it is. Are we good on that?
I will second that, as long as it's option B.
Option B.
Okay.
So let's have a roll call vote.
If I can clarify just a couple of points. So this is the motion to approve the use of the Crummer case property for a temporary skate park and associated parking area. Approve $300,000 to be used from the 1 million designated reserve for this site and appropriate those funds into the temporary skate park project fund. This is not to establish any community raising funds and not to direct staff to hold a community meeting and then come back to council next two months about the permanent skate park.
This is just in regards to the temporary.
And it's the option B. Option B is a key word there.
Yeah, it also authorizes staff to go out and find someone to build it.
Second it, make sure it's seconded.
Okay, so the motion having been clarified, all right, let's go for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes, does, does it include the wording option B?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fair?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so the second motion would be in regards to the permanent park. And that is to have staff do a community meeting, get feedback from the community. And I guess the idea of that community meeting would probably be to see what elements skaters want to see at the park and the size of the park, whether they, we should go forward now with a 12,500 square foot permanent park or look at expanding that size and redoing or amending the EIR to incorporate a larger park in that area.
And during that meeting, have an idea of what the timeline for an additional?
Correct.
EIR and cost, et cetera.
And cost, yes. Yes.
Could I ask a question? Is this an amended EIR or is this an addendum to the EIR? I mean, it seems to me like there's a difference, and it's going to cost us time.
Yeah, it takes time and money.
We're kind of doing cart before the horse on the EIR thing. Focus on the second part, and we'll come back. And when you tell us what the vision is for the permanent park, then we can tell you what it's going to require in terms of environmental review.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Additionally, one thing I would say is that the elements that go into the skate park is traditionally done during the design process, once you select a designer. So the conversation about the permanent park and size is very relevant because that determines how we move forward. I don't know that the actual design elements, unless they're related to the size, would be something that we would do here. That's what we would hire the design consultant for.
So I was just going to say, I would like to know what, what design elements, I think it's important for the council and public to know, and maybe you can do this with a designer before you go to the public, what you would be able to fit into a 12,500 square foot park as opposed to looking at a park that's almost double that size. And I think that that's really, will dictate where that conversation goes.
And I, sorry, go ahead, Christie.
Yeah, this is non-legal, so you don't even have to listen to what I'm about to say. But, you know, we heard from the young skaters exactly what design elements they're interested in. And while a designer will be able to show us where is they're safely and best and most interestingly put, you know, we certainly wouldn't want to go forward without telling the, in the RFP that we need a half-pipe or we need, you know, a certain amount of, of elements that we got listed for us.
Yeah, and I was going to just say exactly what Christie is. We, we should definitely let the designer know that we want elements for young skaters, advanced skaters. We should sort of give them a general feel to some degree, I would think. Most skate parks have sort of have a vibe to them.
Yeah.
Can I get clarity on, are you asking for us to have a designer in place for the community meeting?
I don't know if we can select that now at this point.
That's what I didn't think.
No, but I, but I think it's, I think Jesse, that it would be smart to talk like with our Parks Commissioner, who's a skater, my Parks Commissioner, and anyone else's Parks Commissioners that are skaters, and hear out that stuff. Hamish, you had a comment. I wanted to hear from you.
I, I just want to come back again and go, the 12,500, like, we've got it. We've got it. Don't let it slip away. You kick it off into this design thing. Let's design the 12,500 and you can get back and design the other in this other phase that you're talking about. But if we, we can approve it tonight, and then it's, we, we got the 12,500 and we can design a skate park. But if we do this thing two months from now, you know how it works around here. I'm saying that we can do a two-phase thing if we want, but I, there's an, we're going to get pushback. You do it this other way. I just, please.
The pushback is time, and I hear you.
Get the 12,500.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think maybe we should get, it is fair to get the community input to make that decision. Because we got a pretty thin amount of people, well.
Well, Heather, you're here and you came tonight. I hear you. Would you rather have a 25,000 square foot or a 12,500 square foot? Well, okay, two phases is fine. Damon, yeah, we, we, we had some testimony and stuff about that. But I know that you got here late, Damon. If you had a comment, you can come, I would invite you to the microphone right now. But that's it. Okay.
Okay, we need to figure out our motion.
Well, look, if you guys want to go with 12,500 and go permanent and move forward with that and come back at some point in the future, if you want to expand it, that's, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying that you have a, we have to make a decision. Which way do we want to go?
Okay, I, I would say I agree with Hamish. That seems to be the surest way to get something done, the cleanest way. And then look at an addendum or, I realize what you said, Christie. I'm not disregarding that.
Phase two.
Yeah, phase two, something like that.
So how about this? This would be easier for consensus. Move forward with building a 12,500 square foot permanent skate park. Come back with an RFP for design build. I guess you're going to have to get designed first before we can get the building process done. Is that correct, Jesse?
That's correct.
Okay, so go out for RFP for a 12,500 square foot permanent facility at Bluffs and come back with a designer and costs.
And I, Riva had mentioned- And Riva had mentioned that we hadn't gotten super deep into the permanent design. But what I will say is that in our preliminary conversations, we did discuss a transition style and a street style combination, which is what you see in a lot of parks, a lot of good parks anyway. So while that isn't specific, that is something that we would tie in, I think would probably be preferable for most people. So I just wanted to say, we have it in some research, it's just not super in depth.
I've heard that as well from the public. So I think that that would be preferred in this. I just do, you know, when you bring that item back, there seems like there's a couple more details that we could have in terms of timeline and other stuff that could be answered at that time. So maybe bring back something on what would entail a phase two expansion of that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And did we not hear tonight that, is it the Venice skate park is being expanded? Is that right? Santa Monica. Okay, so that's a possibility.
Well, if we go that route, I promise to bring back an item and bring it here soon. Because I'd like, we might as well, while we're building this, study that and see if it's possible. And if we find out it's not for some reason, we're on the 12,500 when we never gave it away. So I am ultimately in favor of a kind of two-phase approach at this point so we can keep moving. And I don't necessarily, I think it speeds us up, not slows us down, is how I feel.
Okay, so you have my motion? Do I have a second?
Kelsey, do you want to restate the motion?
So Councilmember Peak moved to bring back an RFP for design of a 12,500 square foot permanent skate park and bring back an item on a potential expansion of a phase two of the skate park. Correct?
Correct.
And do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Fair?
Yes.
The motion carries.
I will make a motion to.
Mayor, we have one last item that was listed as a recommended action. I'm sorry if there's consensus or desire by the council to have an ad hoc committee of the council for the temporary skate park. And if not, that can go away.
No need.
Really?
Just going to take more time.
Are there any people here that would like to be part of that ad hoc committee?
No, it would be the council members.
Oh, council members.
Also, if I could interject, when the motions were changed and withdrawn a few times, we left out then the part about establishing a community raised matching fund and authorizing the use of city facilities and staff resources for community fundraising events. Would we like to?
We are in favor of that for the permanent skate park. I am. I can't speak for.
I will second that motion. I'm assuming that's a motion.
Yes.
Okay, should we do a roll call vote? Is this a new motion or an amended motion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Peak? Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Fair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No further business. Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Do you believe this?
They're all together.
I don't, you know, we can all share a great vision for the future.
I was walking around your place.